Pick them down to Mexico?
I'm gonna put them in my house.
Kind of where it works.
Did you get some extra credit for that?
If so, I'll take like ten of them.
You know who had a bunch of those was Cindy Gregory.
Second.
Who owns all the property downtown Visalia. She owns the Visalia Minister.
Have tonight to sit here and support.
Port benches in there, beautiful, all wood. Had a whole bunch of those.
Who's that?
Cindy Gregory.
Let's go, boss.
Good morning. Welcome to Tulare County Planning Commission Board of Supervisors Chambers. August twenty-fourth, two thousand sixteen. Roll call, please. Gong.
Here.
Millies, absent. Elliot.
Here.
Diaz.
Here.
Whitlatch.
Here.
Eliano.
Here.
Aguilar.
Here.
Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public who stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is now the public comment period. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. Under state law, matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the Planning Commission at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the item comes up for Planning Commission's consideration. So that all interested parties have an opportunity to speak, any person addressing the Planning Commission may be limited at the discretion of the Chair. Please note, in order to be considered by the Planning Commission, testimony on public hearing items must be given at the time scheduled for the public hearing. At all times, please use the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Do we have a motion for the approval of the minutes for the August tenth, two thousand sixteen meeting?
Make a motion, we approve the August tenth, two thousand sixteen minutes.
I'll second.
The vote, please. Gong.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Eliano.
Yes.
Aguilar. Yes.
Excuse me, Madam Chairman, just for the record, no one came up for public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, I should, I'm rushing right along, sorry. We will now have the parcel map public hearings. Action on all parcel maps in this section of the agenda will be heard in one public hearing. Unless anyone wishing to discuss any one of these items requests that it be pulled for a separate public hearing. No staff presentation will be given on any item unless requested. In any case, there will be a separate vote on these items.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would request that we're gonna pull A for a separate. If you want to do B and C, I'll be fine, but then I'll leave because my firm is marketing that disparcel for sale.
So you're gonna recuse yourself. That would be Mr. Diaz accusing himself. Any other changes? Any others? Okay, do you want me to start on B then?
Uh, yes, please.
Okay. Tentative parcel map number PPM sixteen dash zero two-two. Richard T. and Claire D. Gist, Forester Weber and Associates. This is a categorical exemption, tentative parcel map number PPM sixteen dash zero two-two, to divide one eighty-acre parcel into two parcels. Parcel one is one point four nine acres and parcel two is seventy-seven point six seven acres in the AE Exclusive Agriculture forty-acre Minimum Zone. The site is located on the south side of Avenue two fifty-six, Oakdale Avenue, approximately one thousand three hundred feet east of Road eighty-four, north of the city of Tulare. And our contact is Francis Torado.
Uh, Chair, as you said, there would be no presentation by staff, but at this time, if you would like to open up the public hearing for both items B and C, and then we can return to item A.
Thank you.
That would be procedurally correct.
Thank you. I will now open public hearing for items B and C parcel maps. Okay. And now we'll go to Pen.
Saying no one.
Oh, saying that no one has any comments at this point. Thank you very much.
There's a, on, on the agenda, it says Oakdale. On the form, it says Oakmore.
Thank you. Could we?
The correction is duly noted. Thank you.
And is it Oakmore or Oakdale?
If I could ask staff, Francis, do you have?
I think it's.
I believe it's. Dale? Yeah, Avenue two fifty-six.
I believe it is Oakdale.
Well, if it's.
It says Oak, on that map, it says Oakmore Road. I think there's Oakdale Avenue and an Oakmore Road.
Well, Oakmore and Oakdale cross each other, so.
Well, it's close. I'm looking at the aerial map, and it says Oakdale, and it says Avenue two fifty-six.
Uh, we believe it's Oakdale.
Okay, thank you very much, and thank you. Correction noted. I am now closing the hearing portion of this.
I'll make a motion that we.
One moment, I think we have a comment on C.
Um, I, I'll wait till we get time to see if you want to vote on item B first. Okay.
I forgot where I was, I knew I was so nervous. I make a motion that we approve a categorical exemption consistent with California SEQA and state SEQA guidelines, um, paying to new construction or conversion of small structures, and conditionally approve tentative parcel map PPM sixteen dash zero two-two, and a waiver of final map.
I'll second it.
We have the vote, please. Gong.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Eliano.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Now, we will vote on tentative parcel map number PPM sixteen dash zero one eight. Are there any changes?
Yes, Chair, the applicant has requested that condition number three, in regards, in regards to curb, gutter, and sidewalk, be, uh, changed to, uh, read that the parcel B improvements will be deferred until building permits are taken out on parcel B, and all the curb, gutter, and sidewalk would be subject to Caltrans right-of-way requirements. They basically wanted to build sidewalk all the way out, but Caltrans is limiting that along their right-of-way. So, that's the only changes to the condition.
And can I ask, how will that be solved, then? Will, will?
Caltrans eventually will build out their off-ramp at that point, and so they don't want to have a lot of sidewalk in the way to have to replace. But talking to the applicant, they are well aware that that's their window to the project, so they will do enhancements to that front, it just won't have sidewalks, so they'll curb and gutter out there for drainage purposes, but no sidewalk.
Thank you.
Does staff will write with that?
Uh, yes, I think it also saves us from people trying to use that off-ramp as a crossing walk right there to the, the gas station across the street.
Thank you. Do we have a motion for tentative parcel map number PPM sixteen dash zero one eight with the correction, the condition?
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we approve a categorical exemption, consistent with SEQA and the state SEQA guidelines, Title fourteen, pertaining to minor land divisions in urban areas, and conditionally approve tentative parcel map PPM sixteen dash zero one eight with the changes to condition number three as noted by staff. Second that.
Thank you. Could we have the vote? Gong.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
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 Whitlatch.
Yes.
Eliano.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Want to go back to A?
Yes. We will now go back to A, tentative parcel map number PPM sixteen dash zero two-one, noted that Commissioner Diaz has accused himself. Are noted. Have a motion for this project? We opened the public comment and closed it.
Uh, based on that suggestion, I think we'd want to open.
Again?
Again for A.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought it covered all three. We are now opening the public, public comment for tentative parcel map number PPM sixteen dash zero two-one. Are there any comments to be made? No. Noted there are no comments, so I will now close the public comment period.
With that, I'll make the motion, we approve the category exemption, consistent with the California SEQA and state SEQA guideline pursuant to Title fourteen, the California Code Regulation, Section one five three oh three, Class three, pertaining to construction location living in, uh, numbers of new small structure, and conditionally approve tentative parcel map number PPM sixteen zero two-one, and the final map waiver. What's the final map waiver?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Could we have the vote? Gong.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Eliano.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried. Okay, this is now a public hearing. Special use permit number PSP sixteen dash zero two-one, Ashley K. Cates, Unity Farms Incorporated. This is for a categorical exemption and special use permit PSP sixteen dash zero two-one to allow assemblages of people as an amendment to previously approved PSP zero five zero zero five for an equestrian facility on an eighteen-acre portion of a thirty-seven-acre property in the AE Exclusive Agriculture ten-acre Minimum Zone. The site is located on the northeast corner of Road two sixty-four and Avenue eighty-four outside east of Terabella, and April Hill is our contact. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman Patiglano and Commissioners. I'm April Hill, Planner Three from County's RMA Planning Branch. The applicant's requested a use permit for the maximum twelve commercial assemblages per calendar year, plus up to forty non-commercial exempt events. The assemblages will be equestrian only for up to one hundred and sixty competitors plus forty audience members. Subject sites on the northeast corner of Road two sixty-four and Avenue eighty-four outside Project is consistent with relevant elements of the general plan with a conditionally approved use permit. It's outside any UDB or UAB, subject to the RVLP, and designated Beliag. Ordinance thirty-four seventeen, thirty-four sixteen allows an assemblage of people in the AE ten zone with an approved use permit. Conditions of approval are included to ensure compliance with the development standards that are specified for assemblages of people in the Rural Valley Lands Plan area. Access is by Road two sixty-four, which is county-maintained. There's also access on Avenue eighty-four, which is not county-maintained. Public Works requires a drive approach be constructed at each proposed or existing point of access. Also requires that parking areas and driveways be surfaced, and the fire department recommends a minimum twenty-foot wide access driveway be maintained. These are all included in site design. Estimated maximum daily trips would average about one hundred and thirty-four for the weekend assemblages. Minimal traffic impacts. The property is located on a hill and contains mostly orchards, with two mobile homes occupied by the applicant and an employee. There's also the equestrian facility that was mentioned before, has commercial horse boarding and training of up to fifty horses, plus private horse riding lessons for between two and ten students a day. About one acre of allowances have been, have been removed to provide a parking area for the assemblage. And the applicant plans to plant four more acres of pistachios in two thousand seventeen. There's no new structures proposed. The assemblages will generate noise, but will take place during daytime hours. The nearest off-site residence is about eleven hundred feet northwest of the arena. Should have minimal impacts. The site plan shows the two residences, a shop building, barns, hay covers, watered corrals, a thirty-nine thousand one hundred and fifty square foot upper arena for the assemblages, two riding arenas, a corral, round pen, pastures, and the proposed parking area. The parking area will accommodate about sixty-seven vehicles with their horse trailers, which will be adequate for the equestrian events. No roping or rodeo events will be held, there's no bleachers to be constructed, no alcohol will be served. There'll be one food vendor to provide food at each event, and they'll be required to have Environmental Health Services Division permit to operate. All portable toilets will be serviced after each event by licensed liquid waste taller and properly managed. Corrals are also properly managed. Dust in the arenas and parking area and internal driveways will be controlled by sprinklers and a water truck. California Natural Diversity Database shows no species of concern in the area. There's no wetlands, waterways, wildlife refuges, or riparian habitat. It's been used for ag-related services for decades and is surrounded by properties also with orchards and rural residences. Project is categorically exempt based on the, that they're related to activities on an existing equestrian facility. A public notice was mailed to owners of property within three hundred feet and was published in the Visalia Times Delta, the ten-day public comment period. We got one comment from a neighbor who was called with questions about the notification map, which does not mean that they're going to be taking over her property. This ends staff's report. Ashley Cates is in the audience, if you have any questions for her.
Pretty straightforward.
This is about as nice a setup as I've seen, good location as we've had in a long time.
Nice. I will now open the public comment period. If we have any comments, if the applicant would like to speak, she is welcome to.
Hello, I'm Ashley Cates, and I own the facility, and we're setting this up to hopefully expand our business as to more equestrian events, and I do run a riding school as well, and we're hoping to get the children more involved in showing and continue to be active in the equestrian community by making it more available to them and also affordable.
Ashley, we're gonna need your address as well.
My address is eight four eight zero, Road two sixty-four in Terabella.
Thank you.
I have a question. Why don't they make horses with training wheels?
That's what I'm for.
I was just gonna say, they sort of do. Ashley, could you tell me what type of events are you, because it says no roping and no rodeo-type events, so could you explain to them what type of events that it would be?
Well, we generally do Jimcana, and we also do barrel racing, but I think the comment rodeo events, there will be no other livestock besides horses. So, barrel racing, pole bending, Jimcana, I also train jumping horses, so we may have some events hopefully for that, and our equine education program, I hope to hold some events for those riders as well.
That was a good explanation. Any other questions?
No, this is.
Thank you very much for commenting. Are there any other comments at this time on the project? If there are no other comments, I will now close the comment period. Nice to have a project come in like this, nice, clean, good spot for it, this is, it's exciting, very nice. Anyone else have any on the commission to say? Okay, do we have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve categorical, categorical exemption, consistent with SEQA Act guidelines and state guidelines, and, and, let's see, pertaining to grading on land with a slope of less than ten percent, and conditionally approve special use permit PSP sixteen dash zero two-one.
I'll second that.
Thank you very much. The vote? Gong.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Eliano.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried. Thank you very much. Moving right along. Do we have a director's report today, please?
Uh, yes, Chairperson Patiglano, Aaron Bach, Chief Planner Tulare County, Mike Washam cannot be here today, he's attending a meeting down in Porterville and regarding a, a housing project in East Porterville, so it's, I'm sure your commission will be either made aware of this, or this project will be being annexed into the city of Porterville. One thing I did want to bring to the commission's attention is we did get an email from the Department of Conservation, Office of Mining Resources, and basically what they stated was that over the next year, they're going to do audits on all of our SMRA permits, and so far, we've got a, a nice review, a cursory review at this point, but a, a good review, and I'm looking into, because they rate these generally, these, how well we're doing under SMRA, and basically the point is we've been doing a really good job in Omar's eyes, especially compared to other counties, so I wanted to give a, a kudos to Chuck Prizelbelski for really taking a handle on our SMRA process, and just to the point made by others recently, at least according to the state, we're doing a good job, so.
Good pat on the back.
Yeah, it is a little pat on the back, especially since we take so many shots to the head with our SMRA processes. We are doing a good job. Hector just mentioned RBT, we talked about the appeal, we did finalize the denial of the appeal last week through the Board of Supervisors, so at least as far as procedurally, that ends the, the process, so the appeal was denied, and at this point, we haven't, we haven't heard much more, there's been some, some talks about potentially another settlement, so, so we'll see where that goes, but we did agree with this Planning Commission that that was the right choice, and.
Is there, is there a time limitation to move forward with the litigation?
SEQA challenge would be thirty days from the time we filed yesterday, the notice of determination, so we'll find out in thirty days. But yes, again, staff, April was here earlier, Hector's here, we, we put in a lot of effort into that project and trying to make what was pretty much a, a small, minimal change, not, not be made into something greater, and opposition was, was able to do that to a certain extent, so we'll see where that goes. Outside of that, we continue moving along on our community plans. We are working on Three Rivers, which is getting closer every day to the draft EIR being completed and the community plan being completed, and I'll let Hector talk a little bit more about what we're doing with the general plan, but the other one is Early Mart, and Hector and I are meeting with the school, the high school, this upcoming week to get a final project description. We've been doing a lot of analysis down in Early Mart as far as biology, we got the traffic kicked off, so that, that community plans, the GPI was over a year ago, but we've had a development interest to the north come in, and we had the high school come into the process, so the community plan itself is, is fairly well done, it's just adding those two aspects to the project that's taking a little bit longer, but that'll, we're hoping to get both of those out on the street sometime November, so that by March, I mean, you almost hate to do it, but they're, they're running out a parallel path to, to get in front of you sometime in March. And at the same time, we talked about the disadvantaged communities grant we've been working on, we're looking to do, finally do Hamlet plans through that grant, so those will probably be hitting about the same time as well. Our grant deadline is March, so you'll probably be hearing those in January and February, and it's a, a bold plan on our part to actually finally have Hamlet plans, and we're pretty much doing all the Hamlets and a lot of feasibility studies for the remaining community plans we haven't done updates to, so there'll be a lot coming your way come February and all the way through March.
But what's the advantage to Hamlets having that designation? I mean, does that mean economic growth?
Well, that, that's similar to the urban development boundaries, the UDBs, the HDBs have the same limitations that RVLP is not required within the HDBs, so that, that's purely an advantage. Right now, under our general plan, we've designated everything within those Hamlet boundaries mixed use for land use. We have used, and have been using, a mixed use overlay across the existing community plans we've updated, so we would be applying that mixed use overlay, consistent with the general plan, to those land use designations, so the hope, the intent is that there'll be much more flexibility as far as zoning to hopefully stimulate economic development within the HDBs themselves.
The reason I ask this question is, is that my, my day job that makes my living, we see that when you tag sometimes property with a disadvantage, that when you're looking for people who want to invest, they're gonna like, whoa, I don't want to invest in a disadvantaged neighborhood because it's a slum, you know, I mean, that's the perception, so maybe that's a legal term you have to live with, but I'm just saying for, I, I don't know how to, I don't, I don't have an answer.
Your, your point is well made, Commissioner, there is the double-edged sword of that term disadvantaged communities, it is legislated, it is a, a term under the government code, and there are funds, grant funds made available to disadvantaged communities, so the intent of this is, like I said, on one aspect, to create the economic development opportunities by limiting the zoning regulations and allow more to occur in those Hamlets, but also to reach out for grant funding, where right now, the process for us, including to get this disadvantaged communities grant, we were fortunate that HC, Department of Housing and Community Development was willing to work with us as far as getting the information, because they need much more documentation than we necessarily have time to put together for them to go out for these grants, and we don't always hear why we didn't get them, but what we have heard as far as feedback is we don't necessarily provide enough information. This grant will allow us to do these Hamlet plans, where we'll be able to provide those to the state, and they'll have all the statistics they want to see, and yes, they will show that the median income is eighty percent of the California median, so that is by definition a disadvantaged or severely disadvantaged community depending, so it, it is a double-edged sword, to use that term, but I think the opportunity that you'll see in getting infrastructure improvements will kind of outweigh any immediate loss of business because of that term, because without the infrastructure out there, you know, in some ways, that, that's worse than being labeled disadvantaged.
I just think it has to say disadvantaged in, in a positive way, and that, I know you say infrastructure, but infrastructure means something to me, most people means nothing, but it means we're gonna provide sewer, water, curbs, gutters, streets, all those things, you know, so if I come here, Mr. Investor, and do a hundred lots, sub- So if I come here, Mr. Investor, and do 100 lot subdivision, that you are supporting me, so.
Well, and like I said, without the infrastructure that we could get through grants, the developer would be on the hook themselves to provide community wells and community sewer service, which are infinitely expensive, you know, without those things being in place. And example, in Yedim and Seville, you know, we're going out for these grants for water systems out there. We're also doing the hamlet plans for them as well. If we had been earlier in the process, it would help them get through some of the analysis that Department of Water Resources has to go through. Instead, you know, we're kind of hoping that we can get the money without having a whole lot of analysis in front of it. Once these HDBs are completed, we won't have to worry about that as much. Plus, it's a requirement of the general plan to actually do these HDB plans. So we want to be consistent with our general plan.
Are there a lot of other counties in California that have a large, I feel like we have a large amount of hamlets in Tulare County? Is that normal?
Tulare County is the only county that has in place urban limit lines. It's a very progressive thought to have the RVLP. Their counties and cities either do it through ballot initiative or through their general plans with sunset clauses on it. This is the only county that's ingrained in the general plan. So no, a lot of other counties don't have this many hamlets, but I think it's a wonderful opportunity, and that's what also keeps us-
On the edge.
-rural and farming in nature versus some of the other counties that have the prolific sprawl.
Right. Thank you. Good.
I just liked, I like the idea, and I like the fact that's infrastructure, I mean, the horrible water situations we have, arsenic, I mean, stuff that naturally occurs in the water, the way to help these communities out. So you can't help a young person growing up to be exposed to large amounts of arsenic and stuff the farmers put on their knives.
You know, I think these communities became disadvantaged because private, the sector shied away from them in the first place.
That's right.
And, you know, calling them disadvantaged is going to make a lot of difference, but I think the approach of having grants to get the infrastructure in that will make it a little more feasible that private industry will come in or developers will come in, I think is a way to go.
I see 20, 30 lot subdivisions and, you know, approving the housing for the folks that live there. Self-help, people like that.
Be great.
Right.
Thank you.
I'll turn it over to Hector to talk about the general plan.
By the way, before you go, does self-help or any of these folks know about this process?
Self-help is actually our consultant. They're helping us with outreach for the disadvantaged communities grant we got, and they've done 23 communities, I would say with at least one meeting each and in some cases, two, and then we're going to hire them again to finish up our outreach.
Get a silver star today.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Hector Yara, Chief Environmental Planner. One update, we have just released this past Friday a supplemental program EIR for our safety element update. That document is pretty much on a fast track, and we're hoping to get it done, adopted by the board in about mid-November, so it will be coming to your body either the latter part of October or first November. Now, the thing about this thing is we basically teared off of our general plan EIR, which pretty much covered, it's officially called the health element, but everybody calls it the safety element. But there was a loss by the Sierra Club indicating that we needed to add a couple more components to get it up to date. And they're very minor, the changes there. Basically, the Sierra Club, I believe, just wanted to have our RMA actually and the safety element include the most recent FEMA maps, flood maps, that kind of stuff, and also have hot links so the public could readily access them to find out, you know, what am I getting myself into here, you know, flood zone type of thing. Also, the government code regarding the safety elements also was updated. So our plan in 2012 didn't include those, so what we did is we went ahead and updated the safety element to include the new government code sections. And again, it's mostly like fire zone and severity, fire zone severity maps, flood maps, just but little things to give the public a quick access to find out, what am I getting myself into when I locate in this area of Tulare County? So huge mapping effort. So kudos to the RMA staff. Pedro Ornelas, he put in a lot of hours to get these really cool maps up. So it's available online if you want to look at it. The review period started Friday. It will end, I believe, October 4th. It's 45-day review. Nothing, I believe, controversial about it. It's just merely an update, adding a couple of more, little more policies for specificity. I don't remember the details, my brain is fried, but it was a team effort to get it out. And Dave Bryant did a great job of putting it together with Pedro, and, you know, all I had to do was the supplemental EIR. So that will be coming forward in a little bit for you, too. And then the other thing, too, to embellish on what Mr. Bach was mentioning, we, the word disadvantaged is a double-edged sword, but it really does open up funding opportunities because now the state will say there's demonstrated need there. And when I was working for the city of Dinuba, when we were doing outreach for the 2010 census, the biggest thing that we had to do was like get people to come out and just put in that critical information, because the only way you're going to get the bag of money from the government is if you demonstrate need, you know? And if you're 10% below, you know, your average income or 40% or 80%, whatever the matrix is, then you're going to, that's demonstrated need right there with the, the hamlet plans come together. There's a defined geographic area. There's, we've included the demographics there. So everything that we really need to say, hey, we have this, we have this, we have that, can you give us this? And it's demonstrated in one packet. You just don't approach a funding agency and say, give me money, and where's your plan? We don't have one. Now, with all these hamlet plans coming into place and all the community plans that we're updating, we're going to have plans in place, supported with environmental documents to say, you know, it's, this is a good approach, and it's an environmentally sensitive approach. And we've just basically covered all the bases there. So we'll still do grant applications like everybody else, but we're going to have all that information there. And then we can attach a plan to it, too, if they need that. So it's all come together and, you know, at a very rapid pace. I don't know how long everybody's been on this commission, but I think you've seen a lot of community plans come forward. You're going to see more community plans come forward. And then, you know, you have the safety element, the housing element. All of these things are coming at you really quick. I mean, I've only been here about four years, and I've seen a lot of activity here in the last four years for these plans than I had in the last 20, 25 years of being, you know, associated with the county and in planning itself. So you've done a great job of receiving our information, forwarding your recommendations to the board, so kudos to you, too. You know, you do care. You're very compassionate about it, and you're very passionate about it. So I like hearing your comments. You know, I like that you represent the districts the way you do in that down-to-earth, friendly, approachable way. I think that's outstanding on your part. So if I were a member of the public, I would come to this commission and say, wow, these are down-to-earth folk, you know, and they're easy to talk to. So kudos there, too.
Greg, have anything?
That completes the director's report.
Oh, I just want to say to Mr. Anderson, and I'm asking this question, are these, isn't that called farm-to-table dollars? Was that that grant, is that farm-to-table? Is that?
Well, there is a, I know TCAG has been working with that.
Oh.
So we, at RMA, at least on the planning side, haven't been involved. I don't know.
No?
Yeah, I don't think-
Been a lot of work out on the country roads.
Yes.
Lots of work, and kudos to you guys. Needed it bad.
Yeah, Public Works has been involved at a higher level as far as Reed and Johnny Wong in the Roads Department.
Yeah, some of those roads haven't been touched in years, so very, very kudos to Anything else? Anything on the commissioners' convention?
We're taking signups now, and there should be an email coming out this week in terms of the spouse and friends that want to attend, too.
Anything else? Thank you. Meeting adjourned.